A section of your agenda is really an update from staff on the community survey, which I think you had a full presentation on Monday.
Right.
So just to hit the highlights, some of the major takeaways from that, and then they also talk about your financial forecast. And in that context, sort of picking up on where you ended 2015 with, understand a small surplus.
Right.
So it's all good. So I'll turn it over to Dave.
Well, it was 295,000.
Before we get into the context for priority setting, we wanted to talk about, and we've mentioned this before, counsel, that we're interested in proposing some alternatives to you regarding the use of the general fund surplus from 2015. So that's a brief conversation before we jump into the other context. So as you recall, there was $295,000 in general fund surplus at the end of 2015 in Jen's report toward the end of the first quarter of this year. As opposed to having a very specific project or projects to propose to you for the use of that 295 and getting into that kind of conversation, what we are proposing is that we leverage that $295,000 into the capital funds that you have created, because we have a lot of things that we want to do in the context of those capital funds, and that this money then would be available in those funds next year to be part of the opportunity, if you would, for priorities that you would have next year moving forward. So what we're proposing is that all of the surplus be transferred, and we'd have to do that this year with a supplemental budget, and there might be a couple other cleanup items that we would have. But right now, this $295,000 sitting in the general fund balance. But again, it was surplus from last year, so we're proposing that you transfer it, transfer it to one or both of your parks or transportation capital funds. And as you're going to see a little bit later when Jen does her update, we're a little healthier on the transportation side than we are on the park side, and so I think actually it might make sense to put the 295 into the park side. And if you did that this year at some point later in the year as part of a supplemental and cleanup budget, it doesn't mean that it was set in stone as we move forward in the 2017 budget. If you wanted to make some adjustments there based on how things stack out, then we could make that change. So it's never permanent. So that's basically the proposal, and we'd like some feedback, please, regarding whether you would be open to us bringing as part of a cleanup and supplemental budget at some point this year in an ordinance, an item that would move the surplus that we had from last year into the, into the capital fund.
Well, first, I'd start by saying I think this is a good idea, that this is the right places to put it. I also have to admit that I am concerned, we need to build some surpluses so that we can level out the dips and peaks in the revenue as, which track the economy. The economy is very strong and has been. It won't be forever. We will have another recession, and we need to keep that in mind. On the other hand, most of the professional economist outlook for the next 12 to 24 months is less than a 1 in 5 chance of a significant recession. So it's not imperative that we start saving, but at some point, we really need to build the kind of surpluses that we would need to keep us whole if we take another big hit on revenue.
And thank you for that. When Jen does her six-year financial forecast, you'll see on those slides the excess reserves beyond your policy that we have. We have a fairly significant bank of reserves beyond that which you dictated by policy, and so we can look at that, and you can see what those amounts are and what's projected to happen to those over seven years, and that'll inform that part of the...
And I just remember how tight and difficult it was in 10 and 11. We were going beyond tightening our belt.
Right. And we didn't use any reserve hardly at all during those time, capital direction, right? We made cuts instead.
If something comes up, can we pull the... I'll just pull it back and put it back in. It's the parks or the general, is this a general fund account, or could use our way? You know, I'm, I've kind of morphed into the finance attorney in Vancouver, but I don't know exactly. When you put it in the parks, it's not like a PIF fund you're putting into, you're putting into a, just a general fund account that's designated for parks?
We currently run the capital projects for parks out of PIF, but we were actually talking about that when we put the slide together. We have capital funds for transportation, and we don't run things out of the PIF fund. So we would probably create a parks capital fund. That way, we wouldn't run into any issues with PIF, and we can just keep it clean or transform the PIF over to support those projects.
So we get, if we decided that we really needed the money, we hadn't spent it yet, we could get it back in the general fund?
Correct.
And there are, there are four funds, and maybe there'll be a fifth, that were created, and I might have the number wrong, early in the tenure of Sean and my tenure, where we had a much larger general fund reserve. And we said, hey, let's identify these for things that we're specifically doing, and so the council created a transportation capital facilities fund, a, just a general facilities capital fund, a general fund equipment repair and replacement fund, a general fund IT equipment repair and replacement fund, and then the fifth one might be the parks one. All of those were seeded out of general fund surplus that existed in 2010, and so it could be pulled back. They're not commingled with any special revenue funds.
Were there specific projects that we already have in mind, or is this potential things?
This would just bolster the funds available in those, available to parks projects. And as part of your prioritization exercise today, I think that's where we'll get feedback from you about what you think your priorities are for that. So it's unspecified, but putting it where we think it'll be the most value-added moving forward.
So instead, one of the things that I think you contemplated when you created those two is they're intended to leverage other sources, and so to the extent that you have them set aside, there are opportunities for grants or other things, PIF monies or other community, other community funding sources, you've got those readily identifiable to participate in those kinds of partnerships.
Right, yes. $295,000 doesn't get you very far, but $295,000 as the match for a one and a half million dollar grant gets you a lot farther, and so that's some of the thinking as well.
There may also be some considerations in there for some maintenance as well in parks areas. I know that's one thing, and I don't know, did you have your ad hoc budget meeting on Friday?
Excuse me, what?
Did you have your ad hoc budget meeting on Friday?
We had it on Thursday.
On Thursday?
And you're referring that I was going to bring up another employee for the parks department?
Part-time employee.
Huh?
Part-time employee.
Yes, but I, we hadn't really defined that, just the concept that another person should be, and I'm speaking to Trevor about getting another person to help with what's going on with all of our parks and gardens in the city, because Sudan can't do it.
And I think, Councilman Moon, you were going to bring that up during the prioritization part of this session?
Well, I don't think I'm prepared that much, and I went with Trevor and come up with some more than my kind of unorganized thoughts about this. It's just, I think there's a need there in our city for more, for more help in our parks department.
I think if we all read the results of the community survey, there's more than, I think there's a need. We're being told that there's at least a perceived need in there to do more with the structures and with the physical locations themselves, so. And I think we've all known that. You know, we've been, we've been very successful in adding some additional park spaces. Also from the survey, it looks like we need to talk about that more, because some folks don't realize that we're doing that. But as we get ready to plan those and design those, it's, it's going to take a little more help. How much more, I don't know. But, you know, they, our staff right now does a phenomenal job, and they all go at it when they need to all go at it. And then we have seasons like we've had for the last two months where everything is so far ahead of anything we've ever had, as far as growing, blooming, everything else, that it gets a little bit sometimes away from what we need to do, so.
My only caution on conversation about ongoing operational expenses and leveraging surpluses is this is one-time money, so it's gone when it's gone, and it's not something you can count on operationally. But, so, I think what I'm hearing is a comfort level with the council at some point this year, it doesn't have to happen right away, but at some time point before we close out 2016, there'll be an ordinance, probably create this fund that doesn't exist, move this money into that fund, and it's available for your 2017 budget deliberations.
And I will note out that the parks maintenance is a priority item that you can choose from when we get to that section of the agenda, so to the extent that you still feel that that's an area you want to emphasize, you'll have a chance to, to do that.
So the next little piece is two context-setting portions so that the council has that information heading into lunch and then into your prioritization. And the first part of that is the community survey. This is not, we're not going to go over everything from the community survey like we did last time. These are just some highlight slides from that, just to get us refocused on that today. And so as you recall, the bottom line upfront, most residents have a positive opinion of the city, which was great. Only 8% were dissatisfied with the overall quality of city services. The top two priorities from your community survey, as you're, as you're doing your prioritization later, knowing this is one data point taken this spring, but they are the same two from two years ago, street maintenance and economic development. And when you see economic development, read jobs in the community. Not surprisingly, when you ask residents generally, do you think some services should be expanded, they often say, yeah, they, they should be expanded. And then when you ask them generally, oh, so you'd be willing to pay more fees or taxes for that, and then the answer is no. So that's, that's what that third bullet is. When you're general, when you're talking about services in general, it's very difficult for folks to get their hands around, oh yeah, I want to pay more for that, because there's nothing for them to really understand specifically. And then another bottom line upfront was that enhanced communication with residents should improve satisfaction with city services. They acknowledged, the consultants acknowledged the improvements that we've made, the investment that you made, but more could be done. And that was partly because of all the new residents that we have. So here's your satisfaction chart. The blue means very satisfied or satisfied, white is neutral, and then the pink is both dissatisfied and very dissatisfied, and they present it this way. So the more red you see, the more dissatisfaction that you see, and you can see city streets down toward the bottom, 36%, economic development efforts, 26%. Otherwise, quite a lot of satisfaction. And what's interesting here is the fourth went down, quality of city parks, only 11% are dissatisfied with the quality of our park. However, and we're not doing it this morning, but you have the presentation from before, when you look, when we drilled into this in the survey of parks, you saw where there was more, there was some dissatisfaction. So I want to comment here, what you see here, especially towards the top of this chart, is primarily high levels of satisfaction, only in a couple of areas where you see some level of dissatisfaction. Here's the trending for that. The yellow bar is where we were at last year, the blue bar is where, I mean, excuse me, 2014, the blue bar is where, where we are at this year. And you recall, if anything is within 4% of a change, it means it didn't change, that's the margin of error of the survey. And so the areas of note here are street maintenance, that's an 8% drop, and that really is the area of note. There are a couple that were, oh, and quality of city water utilities was a 6% drop, and I don't think that has anything to do with the quality of our water. I think that has to do with our bills, right? And again, it's really not the water bill, it's the sewer bill, but we won't get into that. So here you see that our, we've improved in some areas, stayed the same in others, and had some modest decreases, except for in the area of city streets particularly. And I've note there, quality of city parks didn't change at all over the last two years. This is a very important slide, I think, for your consideration as you think about prioritization later today. These are the areas that the citizens say should receive the most emphasis over the next two years, and they were able to choose three items and rank them first, second, and third. So blue means it was a first choice, yellow means it was a second choice, and red means it was a third choice, and then they just added those all up, and you can see right at the top, maintenance of city streets, highest priority again. Economic development efforts, bringing jobs to this community, right up there. But now, even though there isn't significant dissatisfaction on parks, they are emphasizing parks. So if you were to grab three top things, it's our streets, our efforts to bring jobs, and our parks, and then the rest fall out, and you can see them there. I won't spend a lot of time on this matrix, but if you're in the bottom right-hand quadrant here, that's an opportunity for improvement, and you can see the cities and the economic development there. You have this presentation in full, and so you can look at that at your leisure. Also, we'll be sending out the report, the full report. I just got it late yesterday afternoon, I just need to look at it and make sure there's no errors or anything like that, and they'll make final revisions, and I'll get that sent out to you. But this was...
What was the total number of responders on the survey?
600.
Okay.
That's a pretty good sample for...
Yes, I didn't, in the, in the report that was presented to council on Monday, and Councilman, when you get a chance to look at that full presentation, there were, it tells how many went out, 2,000 to 3,000 or more went out, and we got 600. Yeah, they're very, very pleased with the response, a couple hundred more than last time. I think this is an important slide to highlight, because one of the things that you might be considering as you're prioritizing what our efforts are, it's around communication, and our citizens want to hear from email, from our email service and our website the most, followed by our local paper and social media. So the efforts that we've made around social media and our website and our email service, maybe that's an area where we need to continue to make emphasis, potentially even further investment, so I'd just show you this.
Just anecdotally, when we did the visioning workshop for the land use study, we had a fairly short window to get public information out, and that web alert was the primary piece of information that people had to get them to come to the meeting. And we talked to people about how they heard about it, that was, that was one of the biggest sources that they mentioned, so.
So that's great. So thank you, counsel, for your investment in communication this past year. I didn't show it, but when you drill down in the presentation for Monday, you saw that there was some perception of improved satisfaction with communication, so that we've made a difference, but there's more work to be done. Just getting back to streets again, I just wanted you to see that, generally speaking, except for the top one, every area around streets, and really the bottom went around sidewalks, there's no change there, dropped several points. So just to reemphasize again, this really is, really is the priority, street maintenance. And, you know, before I leave that, last year you increased, or for this year, you increased funding to the pavement maintenance program from 360,000 to 500,000. That has not hit the ground yet. That will hit the ground this summer. So the perceptions are based on what happened last summer, that's the latest data, and then whatever, whatever things messed up on streets during the winter, which is hard on our streets. And I will just say, later on, we're going to share with you, just yesterday, got the preliminary report from our pavement condition index consultant about what it will take to maintain our pavement condition index or to increase it, and it's a little more money than 500,000. We'll talk in more detail about that. It'll give you something to shoot at. Because we've deteriorated over time, because we weren't able, able to keep up right away. You remember on Monday, there was a 2014 slide and a 2016 slide, this is just the 2016 slide, how should services change? Wherever it's green, it should be higher or much higher, maintenance of infrastructure, recreational facilities, parks and open space, those are the highest areas where they want to see more in terms of level of service. But again, without any specificity to any of that, there appears to be an unwillingness to pay for it. There's 23% saying don't know. When you talk to the survey consultant, he says you can't count on a lot of that turning into a yes, but don't count on all of it being no. So I think the message is, if you want to ask to do more, you have to be specific. So we did that, and this was a council-generated question. We got a little bit more specific on the license tab fee. And so all of the blue bars are those that said, yes, I would support something, and 25% of the citizens said, I'll support a fee if we use it for pavement maintenance and new road projects. And 18% said, I'll support it if we use it for maintenance. And 2% said, I'll support it if we use it only for new road projects. But when you add all of those up, in some way, 45% of the citizens are totally fine with you doing a $20 tab fee. And on the other hand, 45% are not fine with it. They don't want a tab fee, meaning that there's 10% that weren't sure about that, who didn't report that year. In the black box, you see, or excuse me, in the red box, you see what it was last year, 65% last year were opposed.
Two years ago.
Two years ago. You're saying last year. Two years ago. This is, to me, a very significant result in this survey. That is dramatically different data than two years ago, by 20%. Basically, what you have is a completely evenly split community on the issue of a $20 tab fee, and I think that's very informative to you as you consider that possibility. I threw this slide in just for some corroboration to everything that was already corroborated this morning, but in the survey, and your, and the land use consultants had this, we asked, you wanted to know what people thought through the survey, what should happen up in those urban growth areas, and it's homes, large lot homes, and neighborhood commercial are the top three. Now, there's, commercial and other employment was up there a little bit too, but the top three are the very things that are in the plan. It's not this result that created the plan, but it's very nice to see the survey results be consistent with what happened through the work of the task. And then getting to the end of this part, we asked a question, it was a council-generated question, something that went like this, community amenities can add a lot of value to a community. If you can pick one community amenity that you would like to see, what would it be? And it was an open-ended thing. We have pages and pages of open-ended responses, not quite 600, not everybody responded. The consultant collected them, sometimes things were called different things, so they sort of interpreted, and they collected those, and the top four things are all around parks and rec. And then the next question was, so this thing that you said would be value-added, very specifically that you think would be value-added, now that it's very specific, would you be willing to pay? And I think very remarkably, 69% said, yes, I would be willing to pay. For whatever it was they listed, if they listed community center, said, yes, I, 70, that's basically 70% said I'd be willing to do it. So what that shows is, there's apparently a strong desire in this community for some additional park and rec-type amenity and a willingness to pay for it. That opens up a whole new conversation for you as you think about that topic.
A little bit different in terms of, just to, the, for those people that expressed a preference for a community amenity.
Right.
Those were also willing to support it. So I think what you don't know is how many people didn't put a thing on the list or didn't have these things on their list, so it's a little bit different sample size.
Right.
Of the 600 people then that responded, who actually listed a preference for something? Did that ever...
I have that in the report, and when I send that out, I'll make sure to highlight that for you, so that you know what, you know, how many people of the 600 had something that they wanted to list. And then the next question would be, how many of the, say it was 500 that did, how many of the 500 listed one of these four things? Because someone might have listed a trail, a waterfront trail, been willing to pay for it, but they didn't list this. Now, again, they only had one to choose from, but there's a theme, and I think the theme is, there appears to be some willingness about something specific in the area of parks and rec. That doesn't mean you go off tomorrow and, with a bond measure, right? There's a lot of effort and consideration to think about, but it gives some, some cause for possible action there. So then just back to the summary.
Was there anything, any other answers, the, you were saying the top five that weren't recs, park and rec related?
I don't know. I asked them to do four for the meeting on Monday, and so that's what they did. I can ask them if they ranked beyond that, and if they haven't, I could ask them to do it. It's just someone just has to count them and collect them and do that. So just overall summary before I turn it over to Jen for the financial forecast. I think you should be really proud, the, only 8% of our citizens are dissatisfied with the overall quality of city services. That's, that's a really solid result. You've got some real focus around their priorities at the top level, street maintenance, economic development, followed by quality of parks was underneath that. No surprise, in the general context, we could use expanded levels of service, particularly around infrastructure improvements, but not sure how we pay for that if we want to pay more. And communications improved, but we can do more. So that's it for the survey. I know I went through that fast, but you got the full presentation from the consultant on Monday, so this is just some refocus for the prioritization.
I just want to comment that doing this survey every two years, I like it. I like having the back, the 14 to compare with the progress we're making. I thought it was a wise decision of the council to do this continually.
Yeah, and I appreciate the council's support for that too. It's helpful for the team to have this information. Okay, so one other piece of context before we move into the prioritization piece, the lunch and then prioritization piece, and that's the long-term forecast. I'm going to turn it over to Jen.
Okay, so we thought we would start with the assumptions first before we show the slide. We have inflation at 1.2%, or 2.1%, excuse me, reading backwards, percent, and growth we have at 1.5%. This assumes that we use the 1% property tax increase, and we also factored in using the bank for the general fund that the council banked last year for these forecasted numbers. That gave us an overall increase for growth in the revenue side. There's a couple different ways we could have done that expenditure side, not knowing what we're going to do with staffing levels to address the growth, because obviously as we grow, there's going to be more resources necessary to keep the level of service at least the same, if not enhanced. So we did the baseline at 2.7, and then we worked with Paul to get a per capita increase to compensate for that growth number. So when we go to the next slide, for the slide, which is kind of smaller there, the expenses are increasing at about 3.4%, not the 2.7, but since we used that as a baseline and then added in that per capita cost for the growth, I just left it at what the baseline assumptions were. So as you can see, for '17, we have a slight surplus. We did back out for '17. In '16, we budgeted to use reserves and a couple other one-time projects, so we backed those out to get back to the baseline number, so that we would have a true reflection of actual costs moving forward, not necessarily the projects that we did one-time things with. So that's why the increase between '16 and '17 doesn't look very big in this, because we backed out roughly $300,000 there before applying the increase. And then you can see as the future projects, '18, '19, and really '20 are roughly a balanced budget, because we're able to, you know, with the growth and refining every year, I would assume that we were, would be able to kind of factor that out and make it a balanced budget. And then this is the future years, so if you recall back to 2011, 2012, these numbers are nowhere near where those numbers were, so that's very positive.
This is quite a different...
It is a very different picture. It's much more positive, and that is factoring in additional resources each year to address the... the growth in the area. So this is outside my comfort zone, because, you know, we've been dealing with a different scenario to the past here, so it's much harder to project what we think growth is going to be. So we're still trying to remain conservative, but still address that the economy has picked up and things are looking better into the future.
Right. So just one summarizing comment on this. This is, this is the general and street fund really around operating. It's not capital stuff. And the bottom line here is, we're projecting a little bit more growth than we have in the past off of the trends that we're seeing since the Great Recession and a little bit before the Great Recession, but not as much to be conservative as maybe there might be. But we are also factoring into this increased expenditures in the team. So, you know, it's nothing precise, this is a modeling. But what this is showing us is that over the next several years, we can grow as a community at a faster rate than we have been, and we can bring additional resources to the table, whatever those might be, as appropriate, whether it's a police officer or a parks maintenance person, or, and Mitch is raising his hand over there, but I'm going to comment, I'm going to comment on that a little bit separately, because it's got a kind of its own unique thing, and we didn't really have that on the agenda, but I'll comment on that separately in a moment. So the comforting thing in here is, we can accommodate the growth, and we can have some modest increase in our human resources or our services, and we're okay. Of course, it's a model, and it shows it, seven years from now, $300,000 in parentheses, those are very manageable numbers. So this is a positive projection, and it's reflective of the economic times that we have. Depending on what happens with the growth, you know, this is a thing that changes every year. If the, if the northwest urban growth area takes off quickly, or our waterfront, or the downtown, this could change dramatically. And then, but what, what you would see is, the numbers would just get bigger on both revenues and expenditures, because we'd have to be keeping up, but the relative trend would look more like, okay, I have to shrink it down a little bit, would look more like that. You'll remember the graphs from before, this is just the same representation, but it's visual. Used to be a big gap between the revenues and the expenditures, and now the lines are basically the same, and that's what you want to see. And I'll go back to this slide, because council member Greenly pointed this out, it's important for us to be considering. What you see here is that, next year, we believe we'll have $2 million in this cushion reserve, the additional reserves. This model shows that starting to be spent down, but again, we believe anywhere plus or minus $150,000, $175,000 on this really is a zero, because these are projections in a $12 million budget, so $150,000 is within that sort of margin of error.
Just one other comment too, that if you solve, for example, if you solve the 2019 number of 92, that means that the next year isn't 150, it's 60. So once you, once you solve it once, it's eliminated from the rest of the numbers, so it also gives you some comfort, I think, in terms of your ability to manage those numbers.
The other thing I wanted to mention, just briefly, anyone who has not taken the Association of Washington Cities Finance Training Course, they keep changing the name of it, it's a two-day event in Leavenworth, I highly, highly recommend it. Mike Bailey is one of the people who's been doing that forever. He's presently the Finance Director in Redmond. Last time I was there, he put on the screen a graph of expansion, expenses versus revenue over a 30-year period that looked like that, that you could see disaster in everyone's face. So I asked him, suppose you had drawn that same graph 30 years ago in 1985, what would it have looked like? Oh, he said, exactly the same. And the point is, that 30 years later, there was no disaster.
That's why they call economics the dismal science.
That's not economics.
Those are just the professors.
But, and, and I know that kind of flies in the face of what I said about needing to prepare for recession, but it's also true, like Paul said, if you solve just one year, it saw, it brings things like that each year, so that you end up with a graph that looks like the one that's on the screen. If you drew that graph out 30 years, it would look very ugly. But it's always looked like that, and we haven't had a disaster yet, so.
So the last piece, in terms of this, I'll turn this one back over to Jen, and then we're right on schedule again.
So what we did, we went through all of the capital funds, and this just, we had the other slide with the use of the reserves here originally to talk about, but after factoring through what we think is going to happen this year, 16 what projects are going to actually get completed and whatnot, it looks like our parks balance for 17 capital projects will be at roughly $175,000, and then the transportation will be at 1.7 million, just to give you context as to which fund we should transfer that surplus from 15 into. We're assuming that we won't be using TIF for the waterfront trail, because currently we have a million dollars of TIF for that project.
Just in case.
Just in case. We're obviously hoping to get grants and whatnot through RCO, and construction won't be till 17 anyway, or 18. So that's just for perspective for your planning this afternoon.
So if you take 175 and add 295, you get 470. So a little more robust number in parks. We've got about 107, 1.7 million dollars in matching money. And again, we think on all of these, we could burn through this pretty quickly. Transportation projects are hugely expensive. If you can leverage 1.7 million, you might be able to turn that into, you know, 5, 6, 7 million, and $400,000 of, or $500,000 in parks, you might be able to turn that into several million, so. But gives you some context for your prioritization later, a little healthier in transportation right now than in parks.
Just to clear that, 1.7 is after any commitments that are in the pipeline.
That's correct.
Fact.
That's correct.
On, on both.
Yep. This is where we see the beginning fund balance.
January 1.
January 1 for 17.
Jennifer.
Can you remind me again where the funding is coming from for the waterfront trail?
We are using, we're hopeful that the Recreation and Conservation Office is going to give us a significant grant of, I think it's almost $600,000. Yeah. And then the remaining funds are coming from our parks and pet fees.
And the total cost was, was it 1.2 million, or?
1. several, I can't remember the exact number, 1. something.
More in a nudge?
1.2 with the producing contingency with the waterfront, you know, and water work with that project.
We had, we had the, the transportation budget placeholder a million dollars, because if this trail is on the pedestrian and trail transportation facilities plan, it is eligible for TIF. Just as a, what would, what happens if RCO doesn't come through? We don't have enough parks money to do it. Would you use some TIF money? So we just kind of showed a million bucks. Now, obviously, that would take this down to 0.7 million. I don't, you know, we would have to decide, if we're not successful with the RCO, do we wait and try the next year? Or do we say, no, we're in, and we're going to figure it out, and we're going to use some of our transportation money? It's not ideal. So this assumes we don't have to do that. But we got to get that trail done, so.
We've got to get the trail done.
Yep. So that's all the context setting information that we had. You have your survey that's informed it, a little bit more money in parks because of what you've kind of guided around the 2015 general fund surplus. Operationally, we're going to be growing, and we'll be able to try to keep up with that with staffing levels, and at least in transportation and parks, there's some leverage available to do some projects. And so as you're thinking about prioritization, there's some leverage there, but it's not an unbridled or unlimited amount of leverage, and including operational growth, it's just not unlimited, and so that's what makes the prioritization so important for your team, because, you know, what are we going to go after? And what are we going to do? I guess the only other context, and we didn't talk about this, is we're already doing a lot of different things. The trail with the waterfront, you know, maybe you don't need to rank that highly, because we're already doing that. Transportation plan up on the hill in that land you study, some, the town center transportation plan, already, already doing, you've already done that, so. Lunchtime.
Lunchtime.
So then.
And this is, this is the point where we're going to make up some of our time, because I know we're going to lose Brent by three.
I'm not going to run home and do a quick thing before I go, so.
Okay. Go a little bit before three, we've already lost Dave.
So do you want to try and get back here 12:20, or do you want to just keep to 12:30?
What are we doing for lunch?
Sandwiches are here, make your own sandwich.
Say, make your own sandwich and be back here at 12:00.
So the next section of the agenda is an hour and 15 minutes, and it's to have you provide your insights, your input on the priorities, primarily setting up your 2017 budget process, but also we'll provide some feedback to staff as they, again, go through some of the priorities for the capital side and some of the planning that has to take place between now and when you actually get into the budget process. We've got about an hour and 15 minutes to do what I think last year we did in three hours, so we're going to assume that you are more prepared this time than you were last time, and, but we're going to use a real similar process, so hopefully it'll, it'll be easy for you to work through it. In the presentation, we've got a couple of slides to set up the prioritization process. I want to walk through those quickly to give you some context, some additional context for the prioritization exercise that we're going to ask you to perform. I want to cover the 2015 priorities, just slide that. The potential 2016 priorities, so staff have come up with a list based on some earlier discussions with you, as well as their own ideas, and then conclude with some next steps. But before I get into this, I want to just touch on some things that we spent a lot of time on last time, last year, which is your strategic goal statements and your priorities. So I just want to, again, further context. So you've got four of them, they're listed on the poster, but I want to just, again, talk through these so you have these in your mind. And they're actually really great, because they go back to what you talked about before in terms of the community survey. The first is communication, provide an open and accountable city government through effective communication in order to foster citizen participation. The second is community engagement, support and promote opportunities for community engagement to build a sense of community and preserve our small-town feel. The third is core services, provide effective leadership to ensure that Washougal residents receive quality, cost-effective municipal services. And the fourth is economic development, build a strong economic foundation to ensure a strong, diverse, and sustainable local economy. And as we did last time, I think just, you know, juxtaposing these four back into the community survey results, you can see that there is connection between what, and I think it was purposeful, right? Because when you develop these, you had the benefit of a lot of community involvement, but these really do hit on the priorities that the community have provided to you, and also the work that you've done to allocate resources over the last several years. Okay? So just wanted to give you that. Next up, I want to walk through the 2015 prioritization process, just to reorient you to what we did last time. Similar to this year, we've used initial lists from council and staff discussions. We had council add their own list, so we had an opportunity for you to not only talk amongst yourselves, but also write things on a list to add to what staff had come up with. We went through a dot exercise, we'll use the same kind of exercise this time. We've got, I think, red dots for your top priority and green dots for secondary priorities, so we'll do that same kind of prioritization again. And then at the end of the planning session, we identified your shortlist, and then you used a couple of subsequent workshops to refine that list. You went back and looked at the prioritization exercise, you refined it, and came up with a better list, and a more substantive list in terms of your priorities, and those included. Next slide. And there, we've got these on a poster as well, but the, first up was pavement preservations, and you acted on this one. You allocated $140,000 additional funding for your pavement preservation program. As Dave mentioned, this is going to be actually on the street this summer, so there's a lead time associated with a lot of these. 27th Street Extension and Overpass, 16.6 million, that was your second priority. Community, and we'll have a real live update on these in a minute as well, just sort of the ones that you've accomplished. Community center update, obviously something that you've been working on, worked on, the ribbon cutting. Downtown retail strategy, four. New library was five. Downtown park was six. Seven was enhanced code enforcement. Eight was Crown Road, another conversation item earlier today. 32nd and 34th Stiles to UGA Boundary, another street project. Schmidt Fields, a park project, Parks and Recreation project. Reader boards, monument signs, again, communication, also dealing with downtown vitality, economic development, and then 12, multifamily property tax exemption, which we'll be touching on later today. Okay? So those are the 12 that you came up with from your efforts in 2015. You also prioritized a number of other projects, and this is the full list, again, we've got this on the board as well, to the extent that you want to revisit these, but again, really consistent in terms of how these face off against your priorities, excuse me, your strategic goals. Communications, downtown streetscape, downtown wifi, steamboat landing, little park, trail connection, neighborhood pocket parks, another conversation this morning. Cost recovery, fee increase. Addy Road, 20th to 27th, a grant rider. Shepherd Road sidewalk, 6th Street Overpass, sidewalks, medians, enhanced maintenance, another theme from earlier, trails, maintenance. Event coordinator, the banner sign infrastructure, I think it was on the streetlight poles for banners. And then the waterfront track, which is something that you've also been working on diligently. So I like to do this for two reasons. One, it gives you a sense of the priorities that you came up with last time, and to the extent that there are things that you haven't addressed that are on this list, it prompts your thinking. But the other is that it gives you a sense of where you've, what you've accomplished, which is the next series of slides. So as we mentioned, on the pavement preservation side, you did allocate additional funding. It'll be on the streets this summer. The overpass, you had extensive discussions about what you wanted to do with the transportation, and you've worked with the legislature to reallocate those funds to SR14, looking at the roundabouts and the 27th Street issue. Community center update, that one's, you can check off, completely done, had the ribbon cutting last month, late, early this month. The retail strategy, there's a number of efforts underway there, I think they'll be coming back to you soon, but there's been an update to the existing downtown strategic plan. As Dave mentioned, there's an application for a downtown transportation plan that's due to be submitted, or how, what was that?
End of the month is the deadline for the application.
Does Addy fall under that? That, that's the, is that?
Yes.
Okay, that's the 20th to 27th, is that part, okay.
The new library, the library district put some more money into your pot recently, and I know your efforts here continue in terms of finding a location and getting that development. At downtown park, you acquired a parcel, you're in the process of evaluating other parcels as well. And I don't know, Dave, did you want to walk through the other items on the list? Or, sorry, code enforcement, we've done a couple of things at the council level, you had a chronic nuisance ordinance, you've expanded the commission for the code enforcement officer, and the multifamily property tax exemption, we talked about, you'll be working on that this afternoon.
So just really quick on a status update on these other ones. Enhanced communications, as you know, council, you appropriated funds in the 2016 budget for the communications intern. We had the communications intern on board. We had the communications intern on board, she's moved on, got a full-time job, so the team is, uh, advertising again for that. And that's something moving forward, I think is important. Downtown streetscape, we're, we're working on that, that's actually starting to spin out of, um, the efforts for the planning up on the hill. There's some emphasis now in the downtown, and there's gonna be some product that will come from that. Downtown wifi, we didn't do anything with that. Steamboat landing, um, is in consideration as we do that trail connection to make sure that steamboat stays intact. Neighborhood pocket parks-
And, and that we get it, we get it accessible.
Big repair project.
Yeah, so we, uh, did some piling repair there, as far as, uh, in-water work. That was, uh, a late fifteen consideration as far as an unmet need, and there was some, there was some focus on that to get that done during the window, that we could actually do the work in the Columbia River.
That, when we did this prioritization, we didn't know we had to do that. That came up later, but yes, that did happen. Somebody crashed into the dock and so we fixed it, yeah.
And we did approach CDVG about this project specifically, about the ADA improvements, and it was deemed ineligible by-
It's not eligible for-
By staff at that time, mid-last year.
Uh, neighborhood pocket parks, we haven't done anything specific with that, but it's part of the conversation up on the hill, but we haven't, um, necessarily changed our park level of service standards or, or added neighborhood parks, if you would, uh, to the Parks Capital Facilities Plan. Cost recovery fee increase, I alluded to this a little earlier, the first step in that is, uh, actually Paul is helping us in community development, and a little bit later this year, we'll have something for the council about, um, the services provided in community development to the development community and the fees that are paid, whether they should change, or are they adequate or inadequate. So, more news coming on that. Addy twentieth to twenty-seventh would be, is, uh, anticipated in terms of planning anyway, to be part of the town center plan. Building it is another question. Did not hire a grant writer, we, we continue to do that on our own. We get a little bit of help, though, um, from time to time with consultants. For example, Lloyd is helping me with the Curb Grant application. Nothing on Shepherd Road sidewalks, or the Sixth Street Overpass sidewalks and medians, we continue to plug away at that stuff. Oh, I'm sorry.
Jim Dunn used to write a lot of the grants that came out of, uh, Public Works. Are we, do we have adequate capacity on that at this point, or is that an unmet need?
And we spread that across the Public Works leadership team, between myself and Rob and Suzanne specifically, as far as recreation, RCO-
Right.
And Conservation Futures type of opportunities. So we sprinkled that out amongst the leadership team, and then our senior analyst, Shannon Olson, she met me about a week and a half ago, is also assisting on that.
So you, you think you're adequate in covering there?
Yeah, yeah, I think we're covering, you know, where there's opportunities, there's always room for enhancement and improvements, but, uh, Dave has also assisted us quite a bit on that as well, especially with the Curb Grant, and then, uh, working with Lloyd Highwell as far as, uh, preferred dollars, so he jumped in and assisted in transition as well.
We could always write more grants. There's, I mean, you could almost go to infinity in grant writing. The balancing act is, we can only, we can only handle so many-
Right.
-successful awards, and so we have to be judicious, but, um, we haven't lost capacity.
There are, um, there's also opportunities, and I would encourage the council, even if everybody sends them and we've already gotten that type of stuff, anywhere that you see, in any publications, in any emails, or you get that type of stuff, of grants available, please make sure and forward those on. Sometimes we don't all see what everybody gets, you know? I got it, you got it, you got it, but I didn't read it all the way through, so.
Uh, we did not hire an events coordinator, we have, um, we kinda do some in-house stuff, and then we, with tourism money, we do have a contract with someone that helps with that a little bit. Banner sign infrastructure actually was on, um, on river, the new Black Poles, where we have the, uh, keep discovering Waschugle banner, and then, uh, other entities can do that, that specifically was that, was that project. And then we're doing the waterfront trail.
I thought that we had Renee Carroll that helped us with our events.
Right, that's what I was just alluding to, but she, she does more than that, but she does, uh, a number of different things under, under a contract.
Under tourism.
Under tourism, right. But we don't, what, what this was about was, um, the city putting on events, and that to do that, we would need additional resources, and so we would hire an events coordinator to do that. Now, we've done a couple of events, but we're doing that in-house. Rose has played a significant role in that, done a great job, but that's just added on to everything else that she does, and so obviously that's not a tenable thing for, to go on forever. We've got a couple that we can kinda handle, and she's gets a lot of other folks to help out, and that's the goal, is that her role diminish, and downtown groups or other groups take it on, unless we were to hire somebody. So that's-
They have a downtown association.
Right, right.
Yeah. She definitely puts their role in the future role.
For those that, in fact, are downtown, these could be ones that, I mean, they may be out of the new waterfront, they may be, I don't know where they would be.
So those were just the updates, and you saw Paul writing there that, um, uh, so as you're up there later, you can see where he wrote, some of this stuff's already done, or, you know, they wanna put-
Yeah, so I mean, just looking at that, you can see that out of the twelve in the top, there's only, what, four or five that don't have any in-process or done next to them, and even on the other lists, you know, you've, uh, addressed roughly half of, or are addressing, uh, roughly half of the other priorities. So, um, again, context for your thoughts, uh, going forward, but also a recognition that the priorities that you did come up with have been acted on and, uh, are moving forward, so.
And just because there's some red writing next to it doesn't mean you wouldn't invest your dots on it, because it might be an enhancement, or it continues to be a high priority for you to keep going on it into the next phases.
Okay? So that's looking backwards at what you came up with, uh, last year, and the progress that has been made on those items, uh, so far. The next we wanna turn to is the, uh, items that you've identified as potential priorities for two thousand sixteen, uh, and two thousand seventeen. And these are, again, mostly items that have come up in your conversations with staff or amongst yourselves, uh, over the last year or even more. And the first on the list that we have is the Schmidt Fields enhancements, and again, this is a, a carryover from last year, but with some more, uh, specific items associated with it. The first would be, uh, a restroom, storage, snack shack building, uh, field expansion, parking expansion, and using some of the money, potentially even the money that you talked about earlier today, to help leverage an RCO grant and city and Little League money to, uh, make a significant investment in expansion in the Schmidt Fields, uh, park.
We, we talked a lot about our collaboration with them on the parking lot there, and their building of the bus barn, is there a possible collaboration with a restroom at the bus barn that would be accessible to people at the ball, ball field? I don't know, uh, how-
I don't know that they're gonna make that, I mean, they're required to have a restroom in their barn for their employees, I don't know, we have not talked to them about making that publicly available. I don't know if they would want to do that.
They're probably gonna fence it anyway, as their own security-
Yeah, it's inside of a security fence. I think-
Your suggestion could have merit, though, depending on, and I don't remember where the, where the building is, and potentially where the fencing is, I mean, if the building is more, oh, well, the east, all the way to the-
All the way to the east, it's not near the fields.
Is that a final design, uh, then, on that?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yep, they broke ground. Well, they did their official groundbreaking, right? Yep, that's done. If you really think about this, this park, and, you know, think about other nice Little League facilities that you've gone to, the, the restroom facility is really nicely located, either immediately adjacent to where most people park, or, um, you know, sort of central to the field. The snack shack is definite, and storage is definitely kinda central, um, so you can imagine where that might best fit, at a smaller facility where you only have three fields. And it's gonna be a little more to the west. And we had a couple, two and a half million dollar kinda quote for this, um, a while back, and it just depends on what you do. That's obviously beyond the capacity the city to do. However, we might be able to get money from others, and we've got some leverage, so.
And actually, the third one on this list, the, uh, park improvements, um, or, you know, is related, you wanna talk through?
Oh, Schmidt Family Park, but Schmidt's name is on a lot of this, because of this, they own the property, but, um, this is the park on the water, um, on Thirty-second, and we've acquired it, but we have no improvements. So we just threw this out there because it's something that we've all talked about, oh, we, we acquired it, so then what happens? Well, you wanna make improvements. We have no budget, no project, but it's a concept.
Doesn't close on there?
It's not closed yet, yeah.
Not closing.
I just signed another extension, and we're, we're, again, we're this close, but it's for all the right reasons, and David has done, and Trevor have done a, a great job dogging that, and, um, potentially, if everything goes the right way, but he is in a better position than what he was in before, so.
Is there any possibility of the dog park being on that property?
Uh, I chatted, actually, this past week, I chatted with the program manager there, and, um, I have a two-part answer. Part one is not on the bottom part.
Program manager at-
At the county, at Conservation Futures, Pat Weet, Patrick Weet, goes by Pat. Not on the bottom part, no, unless I wanna give the three hundred thousand back, that they haven't given to us, but they pledged to us. That's, um, incompatible with the purposes of conservation and such down there. On the upper area, uh, technically speaking, he couldn't say, no, that is not permitted because it's still open, it's open space. However, he, he offered a comment to me, and that was, that's not really what we had in mind when we approved this. But that doesn't mean necessarily that we couldn't do it. But that was the comment that he made to me. That's not necessarily what we had in mind. And then he started to think about, well, how many acres do you have there, and how big does that really need to be, and then you wanted to put a restroom building and a picnic facility, and then you have the parking, you're gonna take up the whole thing done. So he had some concerns about it, but that's more park operations, decision-making for us, actually, it's about a Conservation Futures thing.
Well, shouldn't we have those state concerns ourselves?
Yes, absolutely, and we do, and, um, I'm not sure if the Parks Board has talked about that or not, I, I thought they might have talked about, did you talk about that at the first one?
Uses?
Or a dog park there?
I think that was brought up, uh, the last meeting, yeah. They had asked about it, some of the committee members.
Okay.
Did, did he mention what he did expect there, or what was his-
Down below?
Yeah, uh, you said that wasn't what he was thinking of, what it, what are, what is he thinking of?
A people park, open space, um, with emphasis on, uh, habitat and river enjoyment.
So back to this list, um, did you have a, is there a price tag at all for that?
No. The, the Schmidt Family Park improvements, I, if it's two and a half million dollars to do parking, restroom, storage, and snack shack, and, uh, a third field, you can imagine what it might be to do parking, a picnic pavilion, a restroom, storage building, and then a whole habitat restoration and trail system with interpretive stuff. It's going to be two, three million dollars, maybe more, but there may be a lot of funds available. So, so for this exercise, it's, um, would it be a priority for you over some other priority for us to pursue that in the shorter term? Or is downtown a higher priority for a park? Or is the Schmidt Fields one a higher priority in terms of concepts and chasing it? Knowing that ultimately, we wanna keep the momentum going at the Schmidt Family Park, and, um, there are folks that want to grant us money, at least on the lower level, so, we need to, around habitat restoration, so.
Environmental?
Uh, well, state agency, and I think-
Hand private.
And some private, right? But it's not really fleshed out very much at all, it's just they're aware of it, and they're always supportive of the acquisition, and helped us get the Conservation Futures money from the county, because they were in favor of it. I don't know if it's lower Columbia, uh, or if it's, um, do you remember, Trevor, what that, what the group was?
Uh, the Extrary Partnership.
Is that who it was?
I think it was.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, or a part of that, or a special interest.
Another part was the downtown park, just continued acquisitions. You said you closed on one, you have one, you acquired one-
Right.
-parcel, um, this would be to continue to, uh, acquire parcels downtown. The other items mentioned, downtown monument wayfinding signage. So these would be monument signs at the east and west end of Main Street, a little investment in wayfinding signs, uh, to get people navigating downtown, as well as getting to downtown, uh, including the trails. And involves partnerships with the port, uh, the Downtown Waschugle Association and Wasch dot, on SR fourteen. So really, I think this goes hand in hand with the economic development focus of trying to, uh, continue to make downtown a vibrant place.
Just one comment on that, Paul, before we move to the next one. If Dan was here, he might mention that the port has retained the services of a, like a sign and wayfinding consultant, and they are designing, uh, a scheme, a design scheme, and some sign layout for their trail, and they're, they talked to Camus and to Waschugle about, you know, we'd like you to plug into that, so that, because the notion of connect, the trail connects into Camus and then connects into our downtown, and that we are, you know, sharing a common theme and design template, if you would. And we said, yes, we're interested in that, but they're fronting it for now, and we'll see what kinda comes out of that process. And then we've got our trail project, and our Downtown Waschugle Association is very interested in additional downtown identification signage, so we need to coordinate all of that, there's a lot of pieces to it.
Park, trail, sidewalk, median maintenance, so this is just the core, uh, maintenance efforts, uh, variety of repair and update projects in addition to just, uh, regular maintenance. Uh, street maintenance enhancement. Dave indicated that, just received a, an update on the PCI study, your, uh, payment condition index, and I think you talked about that before, so.
Did I, did I already talk about that?
Mentioned it, but go ahead.
Okay. Just yesterday afternoon, saw a draft report, and to keep the current PCI, it will take another hundred thousand a year. I can't remember if that starts next year or this year.
Next year, I believe.
Next year, and then, uh, and we're not gonna get into the, the details of this, we don't have time to do that. In June, you'll receive the full report from the consultant. But hey, we got the information yesterday, so I might as well throw it into the mix here. If we wanna take our PCI up to eighty, and again, when you have the, the presentation, you'll be reminded about what all those numbers mean, that was your target last time, it's gonna take an additional three hundred thousand a year, so eight hundred thousand dollars. And just food for thought, a twenty-dollar tab fee is about two hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Okay. So again, all of these items face off well against what you heard from the community survey as well. So the next list, uh, also hits on those, uh, transportation area, sidewalk, safe routes to schools, so another opportunity to invest, uh, city funds into, uh, creating more effective transportation corridors, especially around schools. Transportation capital program projects for two thousand seventeen, eighteen, so this would be, uh, one way of looking at that one point seven that you showed before, and do you wanna, you and Trevor wanna walk through, talk through these specifically?
Uh, the town center transportation plan is, um, for the large vacant parcels that are to the east of Pendleton, Woolen Mill, out to Thirty-second, so, uh, Lone Wolf Investments and Pendleton owns basically almost all of it, but it would be a plan for that whole area, south of Maine, north of SR fourteen, west of the mill, excuse me, east of the mill, and over to mostly Twenty-seventh, but kinda Thirty-second-ish. Also in coordination, uh, with, uh, Wasch dot, as they do connectivity to the state route there. We talked about that for the Curb application. Railroad Overpass, we all know about that, even though we switched the money over to the state route, because we thought that was a better use, shorter term, that's still something we, because that's very important. There are some projects in the industrial park, working with- Uh, there are some projects in the industrial park, working with the port. Couple different projects down there that could open up some land or, or improve some things. And then, just generally, we, we threw this out there. There's lots and lots of projects on the transportation capital facilities plan. You're familiar, you know, you are aware of that plan, uh, you updated it recently, um, at council. There's other projects on there, Crown Road is one of them, for example. I think that what this goes to show, both in parks and transportation, is we have robust plans. We have lots that we want to do. We've got limited leverage to do it. We need other people's money to accomplish it, and we kinda need to zero in our prioritization so that we can spend our time chasing the ones that you want us to be chasing.
And there's, sort of, I think you're all aware too, there's sort of a two-phase approach to these. You have to invest some local money to get your plans and, and engineering to a certain stage. And then it makes them much more likely to be eligible for grant reimbursements, both on the park side and the transportation side. So investing, getting, knowing what your priorities are, will not just make those projects happen, but it'll make them eligible for the match that will then make them happen. So it's sort of a, you say what you wanna do, we spend a little bit of money getting those projects ready to be eligible for grants. And then there's the grant process, which may or may not provide you with fulfillment on that. But a much higher probability, once you've got some additional progress. And the granting agencies look to that, look to you, uh, at the local level of setting your own priorities and making those investments. Weighs a lot, so. Okay, so now, uh, any questions or clarification on the items that we talked about either from, uh, two thousand fifteen or the new items that we just went over briefly? Pause and see if there's any clarification on those. I guess combined with that, I'd like to open it up for a discussion of any new priorities that you'd want added. I heard a couple of items in your conversation so far. But I wanna also open it up for new items. So any new items you wanna raise for consideration? I'll get them up on the board before we do the prioritization, uh, or any questions about what you currently are looking at. Yeah, for the show.
Community center.
Yeah, just based on what our survey showed, I think it would be appropriate to put those four things on. But perhaps I see like, the pool in the community, like a community pool slash rec.
Combined, community center.
A combined type thing on that.
So you want all four of those, uh, tied by, on the same, three, I guess.
Yeah, all four of them could be on the same property, yeah.
I can, I can get them. So a community center slash rec center slash pool, uh, dog park. And then, it's just more parks, open spaces, I'm not sure, uh, you've got some items on there. But the park acquisition, more, is that what your, your sense is for that, community amenity?
Is that, you got one of the?
Yeah, I was, since the, the, the label is more parks slash open space area.
I don't know, I kinda feel like we're doing a really good job on that, I.
Yeah, um, I think the only part that we're probably not doing well is the communication side. You know, talking about, talking more about, uh, especially as the Schmidt Family Park comes to fruition and gets funded. You know, even for the period of time when I've talked to Suzanne about this, of, you know, the security fence that the family has up there, if that comes down. We begin to mow it down two or three times a year, we put a gate up so that people can't get down to the lower side of the vehicles. But other than that, we at least open it up so that it's there, they can support it down there. The downtown one, um, I've had enough discussions now with the family of the next parcels. They all know where we are, everybody's comfortable with everything, we're just trying to get those finalized out. So to talk a little bit more about that in there. One of the things that we didn't mention in regards to the transportation capital proj, uh, projects, specifically with the Town Center Transportation Plan, as we complete that, and I'm not sure, David, how, uh, comfortable you are that the fifty, seventy-five thousand will cover really what we need in there to really get us moving forward. I kinda think it's gonna take a little bit more. But even if it does, I think that's well spent, because that begins to inform very quickly the Bishop family, Mr. Hickey, a few other people down there who have vested interests of some stability and some surety of what's going to be there now. How can I use my properties, and now we begin to move forward. It's not a loss on me, and, and, and I hope you are careful with how you use this or don't use it at all. Mr. Hickey has started showing more and more people the concepts on paper that he has for the dog park property. But still catches at that it's a concept, until he knows more about what we're gonna do as a community and, and that type of stuff down in there. In the back of my mind, though, I go, if you're Mr. Hickey, you just moved back to town full-time, and you kick the dogs out of the dog park in the middle of the summer, and you don't start to do anything for three or four years after that, that doesn't make a lot of sense. Why would you kick up that, that dust fight? So hopefully, that's gonna happen sooner than later and, and works into that as well. So there are some other things out there that aren't necessarily in our control, but to some degree, they are, as we get some of these things picked off of other people coming forward and doing them. But to get back to the original conversation, I think on the, on the park side, I think where, where we need to be and heading where we need to be, at least me personally. We just need to, as it's appropriate, talk about it more so the community knows what we're doing as well.
This kinda ties into that, I, on the park acquisition side, I almost feel like we're getting, I see the two Schmidt properties up there. Like, we're almost taking on more than we can handle, and we're forgetting about some of those things that have been kind of around for quite a bit of time, as much as we'd like to develop that new Schmidt property. You know, we have a known entity over there with a known kind of usage, um, at the ballfields and stuff. I, I don't wanna leave stuff that's been around for quite a long time as we chase our dreams, uh, too, for the new acquisitions. And don't get me wrong, I love having park acquisitions. I don't know how, you know, when you acquire stuff and you postpone development, the cost of that and, and, and stuff of that nature. I, I like having it. And I hope we keep getting more of it, but I know that's a cost as well to maintain it, and.
It's always a balance of trying to get it at the right time when it's advantageous to do it.
Yeah.
Sometimes it's a reality that you have to.
Cause it may not, you may never have that opportunity, yeah.
Yeah, you probably always have an opportunity, it's whether you have the opportunity at the dollar amount.
Right, whether the opportunity corresponds with the bank statement.
I mean, certainly, to hear about grants that are available and stuff, you never wanna turn that down. But I hate to lose sight of stuff that's been there for so long and, and kind of neglected in a sense of.
Thank you, so does your park staff.
Yeah.
In the presentation this morning, it was clear that we need to do some work on the downtown zoning core and standards and all of that kinda stuff. Do we have the resources at this point to do that, or is that something that needs to go on the priority list?
Some of it's within the current scope, but some of it, when it talk, when it comes to implementation, it may be stuff that we have to look at putting more money to.
I don't know what to call that, but I'd like to put it on the list.
Our implementation of the comp plan, we just for, or something, just generally stupid, general.
Oh, well.
The land use plan?
Yeah.
The land, yeah.
Yeah, I, it, it, certainly, there's some more stuff to do up in the northeast, northwest. But I'm particularly concerned that, it strikes me that, that there's a lot of work to do on what we've got in terms of zoning and use and standards, architectural standards and all that kinda stuff downtown. And I'm not, I, I don't, if you say we have the resources, resources to do that, I'm fine.
Well, they've, they've done some of, they've done some of that stuff, um, but getting into a point of refinement to, in, in order to implement. I'm not sure we're all the way there yet, but I don't, I don't anticipate that being a lot of, that we need to throw stuff at.
There's still some budget for them to do more work on.
Yes, there is, there is.
And they're planning to do more stuff.
Yeah, right.
I even heard from us, somebody else asked, Paul, that we've got a lot of work to do on the downtown plan. I still hear Wes saying that he's happy with it, or he's saying that he's happy with it.
Well, they're, they're, they're happy with it, but they're, they're happier with the discussions that we've been having, having around certainty changes. A lot of the, you heard Eric mention that, the, the shoulds to shalls and getting more specific with that. So they, they've been happy with those discussions.
Yeah, I don't see that as being a heavy lift, though.
No, I don't, I don't see that being a, a, a heavy lift, I don't.
I just didn't have any way to know how much of a lift it was.
No, I, I think, like I said, there is still, there is still some budget in, in current scope that we have to, to look at some of that stuff. But, uh, I think, much like the folks up north are liking the plan, I think the downtown folks are very much in the same boat. They like the direction that we're going and are willing to move that forward.
But they're, like the folks in the northeast and northwest, northwest, they wanna see the details. They wanna see it actually happen.
Yep.
To move from the discussion to the code writing, uh, certainty phase of it, so.
I don't know if this is a, a, the right, I, I don't know, but we don't have a veteran memorial in this city.
We do.
Where?
Down the arena park. Do you have a couple, three of them?
I think it is, okay.
You have, uh, well, that's where it was deemed to be appropriate back when they did it. You have those who have been, uh, lost from the community and all of the conflicts. You have another one that is the, it's not the Society of the Silver Rose, but it's the Silver Rose, the Asian orange. Those that have been affected by that, and there's, I believe there's one other down there, I think there's three down there. You might owe me two.
Okay.
It's not to say that there isn't room for others, but, or that that's necessarily the best place for one.
It's fine, it answers my question, I just hadn't thought of it in our city, and so, yeah.
Could use maybe some more visibility, um, but.
Downside is that, and it gets back to that communication, nobody ever lists it.
Right.
I mean, I see when Memorial Weekend comes around, everything, and they list them all in the county, and they never list those ones. I'm trying to remember what one is in Upper Hathaway Park.
I don't recall, I think there's one there, though.
He, but I don't remember. I could be incorrect, there's, there's one somewhere in the community that's for the veterans of World War One, specifically. But I don't remember that it's that one.
Have to, have to research it a little bit.
Okay.
I just have one quick question on something you said. As far as robust architectural, um, and design standards in the downtown, you don't see that as being a heavy lift i- item?
Well, no, I think it, it's a lift, but it's, they, they, in the, the full report, they've already started on some of those ideas and concepts. And so, um, within the existing scope, so.
And there's more to come.
Yes, right.
Other priorities? Things you heard this morning, or things that have come up recently? Go ahead.
Well, David just reminded me of an email I sent, um, in regard to a forestry plan. I don't know if you wanna put that up. I think really, everything else was kinda covered. The woodburn code stuff, I don't know if that would, yeah.
Yeah, you hit downtown codes, you had, uh, also, uh, sort of the woodburn subarea.
Just fixing the existing, uh, whether it needed to be a subarea and, and, uh, the vacant areas that were still remaining. Kinda getting some more detailed guidelines to lower the density and traffic. That's already causing so much problems up there.
And then, I think you, Dave mentioned you also had a thought on strategic planning to do a little bit more depth, or wasn't sure exactly what.
Yeah, I, on just whether it would be worth an investment, I know you had mentioned it's quite an expensive.
Well, what, what we are doing is, you had talked about two things, is it time to redo the strategic plan? And when we did it, we're not quite there yet. And that, yes, depending on how you do it, we did it at not much dollar cost, but we did it at significant internal cost because we took two department heads and put them on that project for quite some time. So that cost us, but it wasn't, you know, we didn't write checks. The other piece was the implementation follow-up and reporting, both here with the council and amongst ourselves and to the community, and that part we're working on. And we'll be working on this year. And you had said that's a lower-cost way to keep that thing vibrant, I think is what you're getting at. So it might be that, let's, let's let that play out and see how that goes, instead of throwing up there, hey, let's redo the plan. But I think in two, three, or four years, it might, it probably be time to step back. Okay, what have we accomplished, and are these still our focus areas?
Joyce, do you wanna elaborate a little bit on some of the parks things that?
Of, of another employee for the parks? Well, like I said, I'm not, I'm not there yet, but obviously, through all this, the survey and the studies, we do need enhancement in the, in people in our parks. So, um, ye, yes, I think that should probably be on the list, cause there is definitely a need.
It is, so you've got a chance here.
Okay.
For the park maintenance side.
Okay.
To express your preference for.
I just didn't want that one to kinda stay hidden, because it really doesn't hit on the specific areas that you're thinking about.
Yes, because I'm really thinking of the gardener, horticulturist.
A design, someone, a, a landscape architect, uh, designer, maybe.
Horticulturist, not just maintenance, so I guess I'm talking of.
Sounds like a new, a, a horticulturist?
Yes.
For.
Well, is that the proper word?
Botanist?
Gardener, that's what you think is it.
Botanists are more expensive than gardeners.
More syllables, more money. Well, one of the, and I don't know how many folks get, uh, approached on this stuff from folks just out in the community, especially when you're downtown, and some of the downtown business folks and that type of thing. We just put the flower baskets up. Now, in the next month, they're gonna quadruple in size to what they are. And that always seems to be a time when people recognize them, see them, and go, gosh, that looks so nice. And all the flowers over here flowering, the bushes, they look so nice, all that kinda stuff. And you start thinking about all of the time, all of the money we've got invested in things that are rooted in the ground, literally. And our staff does as good a job as they can. But really, the trimming of them, the fertilizing of them, the, that type of stuff of them, we don't have time for. And we prob, other than Suzanne, I don't know that we've got the bodies on staff, and that certainly isn't something that we wanna. I don't wanna say we don't wanna waste her talents on that, but that, we need her doing other things, even though she's, she's very qualified to do that. So I would probably love to do it. And you've got, I'll call them the preys in the community, that people see this time of year and throughout the summer and the fall that are there, that can be so much, to some degree, so much more. But we don't have the time to invest in them, and that's what I see that, that individual potentially doing. And still not being enough to do it right, but being a hundred percent more than we're doing now.
I, I just think that's necessary at this point in our city.
And I think when you take, if you take that one, again, this gets into our conversation of their ongoing costs, they're not one-time costs. You take that in conjunction with, uh, another item on the survey, that's one or two more down the line of the enhanced code enforcement, the cleanup, the litter, the people getting their yards cleaned up and, and that type of stuff. Now I think you start making a lot of visual improvements in the community that, from the look of the August, they'll be seeing.
I was just wondering what the cost difference is between bringing someone on as a full-time employee to do that versus contracting out to do something like that.
It depends on, uh, the, the knowledge, skills, and abilities that the employee needs to have and what the market would demand in terms of a, of a salary for that. And how, how long you need them during the year, for how long during the week, uh, and then contracting it. Until we flesh that out more, it's hard to say. But, um, sometimes contracting can be less expensive if there's economies of scale in the contractor. Or they don't have as robust a benefits package. I mean, it's as simple as that. Our overhead is, you know, uh, we take care of our employees pretty well. And, um, there are some jobs through private contractors where that's not the case. And that savings can get passed on, that's really the primary difference. Other than leveraging into a large, um, a large economy of scale type thing. But, until we know exactly what's the skill set that we want this person to have, do they have to have certain licenses or credentials? until we know exactly what's the skill set that we want this person to have, do they have to have certain licenses or credentials? And how much does it cost to attract that, um, it's hard to, it'd be hard to answer that. But I think we'd have to look at all of those options.
Excuse me, and I think that's a conversation with Trevor and Suzanne, because they're the ones that are responsible for this to how another person is best used, and time-wise. I wasn't thinking of full-time necessarily.
Part-time seasonal.
So I want to, um, to go through the list of things that we talked about before. So we've got quite a bit of park stuff, we've got quite a bit of transportation, which streets, which were the two biggest things that came out of the community survey. We've got some economic development downtown related items as well. Uh, public safety, any specific items related to public safety that you might want to add as a priority?
I'm not sure, it's this year, but once you build out some of that northwest part of the city, I think you pretty clearly are going to need another cop.
And we've, we've kind of built that in, that assumption into the long-range model, without saying what types of positions it would be. If you can imagine the community grows, we need additional human resources.
Right.
It's going to be in public safety, it'd probably be in street maintenance, and maybe in facilities and parks maintenance. And I think, over the course of that seven-year model, there might be three employees in that model somewhere.
So I guess more to the point, is there a deficit, rather than thinking of future? Is there a public safety issue that you think needs attention at this point in time, as opposed to just preparing for the future?
I'm not on the public safety committee, so I haven't been privy to those discussions, but, uh, are any of the people who are on the committee having anything to say?
We've had two officers that we're going on force that are in the academy now, so for the time being, I think we're, I think we have done what we said we would do. I don't feel, I mean, obviously, if we increase, we're going to need more resources.
Right, but in terms of the current status, and it hadn't come up, so I'm assuming that was the case, that, that it wasn't on the top of mind for, for everybody who I wanted to check in and, and just make sure.
The only comment I would make is, when you look at the public safety section of the presentation from Monday, there was some concerns about parking and traffic. There was some perceptions of dissatisfaction, and that dissatisfaction had increased a little bit. And I think the chief will tell you that those are two areas that are a constant challenge to deal with, and they're a lower priority often, for obvious reasons, than other public safety issues they're dealing with.
I think as we, uh, if we were to get another officer on top of what we're having to do, uh, I think we're at the point where we probably need to have dedicated traffic units. Ideally, if you have, since we have two squads, if you have one squad, that would be great, but even just to have one officer as a dedicated traffic cop, because that is our, quite our, our largest complaint, and the thing, uh, where we have the least resources to throw at it. So, uh, I think as I'm looking out down the road, say, uh, any new bodies that come in the, the department, would probably designate it into a traffic unit, um, to help combat that.
Okay.
And then just briefly, I have some pictures on my pad here, you can look at them, of wayfinding signs. One in Spokane, and the other one is actually in Windsor, California.
And wayfinding signs, I think, uh, with specific downtowns, we've got that.
Right.
As part of that.
Yeah, I just wanted to throw out some examples.
Okay. Good with the list, anything else, last call for major additions, if you have something you want to add as we're, uh, going through the, the dot exercise, feel free to either call me over, or we can write additional ones. I did put parking and traffic enforcement on there, uh, as well, again, just to, to give you the opportunity to express that as one of your preferences. So, in terms of the exercise, it's going to be similar to last year. We've got, uh, ten dots for each person, there's five red and five green. Red is for your top priority, green is for your second tier priority. Um, you can put, uh, two on any item. I think last year we may have let you put as many as you wanted on any item, but we want to limit you to two on any item, so if it's your, your most important thing, you can take two reds and put it on there. And you don't have to spend all of your dots, um, you could.
You can sell them.
You can't sell them.
You're, you're making way of free markets, Paul.
I know, I know. So, what we'd like to do is take the next fifteen to twenty minutes, uh, it'll give us, uh, does that give us the right time on the agenda? Ten to fifteen minutes, because I think we've got, uh, we've got till, uh, one forty-five is when we're supposed to take a break. So if you can do this in fifteen minutes, we can then take a couple minutes at the end, just to observe what those priorities are, and, uh, talk about how those will be translated into, um, the next steps.
So how many dots total does they have?
They have ten.
Ten?
So some of these charts are redundant, as though, like the Schmidt on two of them, um, on, on the first one and the third one, or we, do you want us only to?
Uh, you can do it on any of them, so we'll.
We'll just combine them.
Yeah, we'll combine the two. The ones on the right are sort of the, the recent ones.
Okay.
And the ones on the left are, uh.
Last year.
Lasters.
Yeah, but don't forget the ones on the left. And remember, communications was, you know, a big thing in the survey.
And remember on Schmidt, there's two different Schmidt, you need to.
Right.
Paul, do you want David and I to do these?
Uh, I think, uh.
Not me.
As an elected official, I think it's appropriate for you.
These aren't council priorities?
Uh, up to you, your, your choice, I'm, I'm open for you to.
I'll wait and see how things go.
That's, that's, that's your prerogative, right? You get to weigh in at the end, there's a tie.
Got a bunch of black dots. You get one veto, Darce.
Work, lots of good discussion, lots of good, uh, voting and revoting, unvoting. This isn't scientific, so I think staff will take this back and give you, uh, more of a summary of these, uh, on, uh, next week, or whatever, they, they get them summarized, but just in top glance, uh, some of the top priorities with sort of four reds, uh, and one green, the community center, has, uh, was one of the top ones. We have three reds, so Schmidt Fields, three reds and two greens, the expansion for Schmidt Fields. Three reds and one green, street maintenance, downtown park acquisitions. Got, uh, two reds and two greens, sort of the downtown code zone architectural standards issue came up. And then, uh, two reds, two greens, I mentioned that park trail maintenance, uh, street maintenance. And then, four greens, the downtown center transportation plan. So those were the, sort of the top handful of items that you've come up with, and again, real strong themes here, parks and transportation, uh, economic development, really the, all of your items fit those three things, which are not only are, uh, on your top list in terms of your strategic goals, but also reflect what you heard from the community survey. Thoughts, observations? Want to lobby for something that's not, didn't get enough votes?
Would that be the Harding side?
Some of it's got, you know, a couple of reds, which mean, uh, well, Crown Road, two reds and, and a green, so that means two people at least voted for it. Couple things, Schmidt, again, we talked about the taxi division, which we'll talk about in a minute. Neighborhood pocket parks, another one. Dog park.
The only thing that I can think of now, having done all the, is you talked a lot about the need for improving communication, so did the mayor. And generally, that's not money-intensive so much as it is staff resource-intensive. Uh, but we could, we could do some more there. One idea that popped into my head would be interest groups on the, on the website or email list. So maybe you've got a bunch of gardeners who would like to congregate email-wise through the city website or through the city email system. Couple of ideas along that line, don't cost a lot of money, and actually don't cost a lot of time, once, once, once they're set up.
And just talking about gardening, I've run into some of these master gardeners lately, and they seem, like, I don't know if you could, more than willing, like, they are desperate to impart their ideas and instruction on botany and so forth, like, for free. Like, I don't know if that's something that, I mean, you could advertise, you know, I don't know how you know who you're getting, and if they don't have any ulterior motives or something, but a lot of these people, they don't own landscaping shops or gardening shops, they've gone through extensive training, and they would be more than happy to import, impart their advice, especially in regards to their living in the community and stuff.
Maybe it's, makes sense to have kind of like a parks board, except for landscaping, arbor, trees, that kind of thing. And rather than just a group of people who sit around and, and, and talk, but a volunteer group that goes out and does things.
Yeah.
Uh, that, that's some variation on a, on a, you know, create a new board.
Yeah, um, there's no doubt more involvement is better, period, regardless of what the level of it is.
Right.
It's just talking, I mean, there are people out there working the issues. There's a lot of people there about volunteer side, I think we've talked. In the past, uh, various issues on volunteer efforts with the union. And, you know, projects versus ongoing work and that type of stuff. But that really, I think that's the basis where a lot of it gets to, is just the work, the physical labor side of it, and having somebody that does it or some buddies that do it.
Like, maybe the advice is for free, but not the, the labor associated with it. So you could have somebody that's very qualified, maybe imparting advice to your part-time gardener.
Is a master gardener, a horticulturist, she, she is, she's qualified, I mean, she's qualified, she's just.
Kind.
Yeah, she's just kind.
We have two master gardeners at St. Anne's, who basically, with very little labor other than themselves, have created a peace garden behind them. I invite you to go look at it, uh, but, but a lot of those master gardeners just want to get their hands in the dirt. And don't have any other place to do it.
We have a lot of dirt. There are some items on here that, um, maybe didn't get any dots or very few, that we will be continuing to do some work on, regardless of the, of the priorities, and that's not, that's not a bad thing. I'm, I'm kind of surprised that the library didn't garner any dots at all. But we're still pushing them to get their decision made, and get on with life and get a project going, so.
I think there'd be more interest in the library if we, we keep getting excited about something and nothing happens.
I know.
You know, give money and nothing happens, and somehow they have to coordinate, and if they would just get a location, I think it would be much easier for us to get excited about it, but we've been like, what, three years without, with all this kind of possibilities?
I had a dot there, but I removed it because it said in process, like, there was, it, it wasn't needed to put a dot there, but I think that goes hand in hand with the downtown strategy and the new park acquisitions and so forth. They all feed upon each other, so it wasn't that, I, I just was like, okay, we're kind of moving there, so it doesn't need my dot. Was the.
What she said, I, that was, I was in the same boat, yeah.
Yeah, me too.
And, and that's fine, I just don't want, you know, at some point, you know, as we do updates and stuffs, you know, council will come back and say, gosh, wait, those weren't our top seven priorities, what are we doing, working on those? There are some things that are just in process.
Yeah, I mean, I think I like almost everything on these lists, it's just, uh, yeah.
And I think that's good context for when staff come back and give you an update on this, continue to identify those things that they're working that you had identified earlier.
I said, there's a whole bunch of these pieces that could come together, something about downtown, the library.
Right, Mayor, Dave, anything else to add?
No, we'll do what we did last time, we'll, uh, distill this down into documents where we put the dots in the Word document. We'll send those out, and this will be informative to us as we begin budget preparation, and informative to you as you deliberate on the budget.
Thank you. So last time Connie Go didn't get her dots on, is, they're gay, and, uh, are they going to come in later?
Must be present to win.
Oh, right.
It's up to the council, you know, last time we did two additional passes. We did a, uh, you didn't get to do your dots, so here's what your colleagues did, would you like to put dots? Then we reshuffled it, put them in the order of the green and red dots, and gave you blue and yellow dots at a work session. And said, okay, now here's what rose to the top, now, now what would you do with the ones that rose to the top? And then we comboed those together, it got complicated. It, I, to be honest, I don't think it really changed much.
And this gives us permission, frankly.
Right, so that's up to you.
Yeah, one thing we can do with this though, or whatever, we end up with, while we have some process with it, is make sure on that education side, make sure that we also get this out to the public.
Right.
We did a survey, we updated a survey, we brought those results back, we heard what you said, we talked about those, we talked about some more things. Here's the priorities we're going to put forward for the next year, and here are some other things that we're continuing to work on. I think that, you know, for me, the survey, other than three or four things on there, um, really a lot of that was all, you, you, it's communication. I mean, if we had the ability, if I looked at every department head and said, Trevor, every three weeks, you have to have a two-page press release that goes out, that talks about what you're doing, and you need to make sure that the post record puts it above the fold on the front page. Our marks on that survey would have been glowing, but we just, there's so much going on, and some things just continually have fallen down to the bottom. I don't know that beating our, not beating our own drum is, it's not a good thing, but it's, it's not the worst thing.
Does the city need a press person?
That's what we talked about when we talked about a communications person.
Because Renee Carroll is quite good at that. And if we're only using her for some things, that might be a possibility.
Yeah, it, it, it strikes me that if I had unlimited resources for that, I would be putting out a lot more material to the Portland television stations. Little film clips of Steigerwald, film clips of steamboat landing, film clips of the new trail. Uh, not broadcast quality stuff, but just enough to get them interested. And generally speaking, the most successful people are the weekend features editors, because they're desperate to move up, and if they can do a couple of good stories, they have a chance to move up to weekdays or, or evenings from weekends, so.
Okay, so, good job, provided the feedback, again, uh, this is sort of a stay tuned message. These will be coming back to you, both in workshop format, but as well as part of your 2017 budget process. So we've got a few minutes to take a break, we're scheduled to start again at two o'clock. I'm not sure what your preference is, we can either try and roll into that sooner, or take a full fifteen-minute break. I think you guys have had breaks, you've been up and around, so do you want to just, uh, take a few minutes and then start right at two?
We'll start now?
Potty break, be a potty break.
You did have, tell some people that you'd be starting at two, so.
Five-minute potty break, back here at two o'clock, we're starting, whether you're back or not.